This board meeting of the Board of Education for September 28, 2021 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meetings tabs. The meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV Services website and on Channel 28 and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. As of August 13th, Governor Kate Brown reinstated a statewide indoor mask requirement for all indoor public settings, whether vaccinated or not, in order to stop the highly contagious COVID Delta variant from spreading further. Tonight, we have in place mitigation strategies to keep you safe, members of the public and staff. Board members and staff in attendance are wearing masks and most, if not all, are fully vaccinated. We have air purifiers placed in the boardroom. And we have ample space for you to spread out, so we've got space for you and enough space to social distance. Good evening. I want to welcome the board, those of us that are here. We have a couple missing. I want to welcome the board, the superintendent, staff, families, students, and guests. We're going to start with a resolution proclaiming the celebration of International Translation Day at Portland Public Schools.
Welcome back.
Guadalupe, would you like to, I'm sorry Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this resolution?
When I start this, thank you Chair de Pass. Yes, International Translation Day, which occurs on September 30th, is meant as an opportunity to pay tribute to the work of our language professionals, which, as you know, play an important role in facilitating dialogue and understanding across communities and cultures. We have Mary Fair Sager, our manager of Language Access Services, back for a second time. We're pleased to have her here and to share with us how our own Language Access Team provides this vital service to families and students across the district. Thank you, Mary Fair.
When I start this?
Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Guerrero, and community members. My name is Mary Fair Sager and I am the head of the Language Access Services Department at PPS. And as the Superintendent Guerrero mentioned, I am here because on September 30th, interpreters, translators, terminologists, and linguists are celebrating International Translation Day. Together at PPS, we are able to serve approximately 10,000 students and their families who speak a language other than English at home in 110 languages. Those include American Sign Language, indigenous languages, African languages, Asian languages, and European languages. As someone who has always interacted with other languages and cultures while growing up in Mexico, this proclamation is deeply personal. Being an immigrant has given me the opportunity to experience the challenges of living in a new country firsthand. The need to learn new systems, to not fully understand what is happening, the denial of professional credentials and work experience because they are foreign, and not having a network to help out. Immigration has also given me the opportunity to meet so many people from different countries, backgrounds, cultures, and linguistic groups who, like me, are trying to make a positive impact in their new communities. I truly believe that language access is the missing link for better outcomes in all spheres of lives for people. As a team, we recognize that languages have implications for identity, communication, education, and development. These reasons constantly push us as a team to continue using our expertise to develop innovative approaches to our work, like the Multilingual Special Education Family Toolkit or the multilingual website. Multilingual communications are critical to build inclusive spaces and preserving cultural heritage and preventing communities from losing that heritage as well. Through the Language Access Department, PPS has transformed the participation rates of multilingual communities across the district. You can think about that, about visioning, focus groups, telephonic outreach, et cetera. It is really an honor to be a conduct to amplify the voices at every table across the district, creating the pathways for them to meaningfully connect with the district. This would not have been possible without my team, for whom I have the deepest appreciation and I have derived the strength to continuously pushing myself to perform better at each stage. Thank you to Alex, Anna, Ariel, Carmen, Ellie, Jingjing, Netzanet, Olga, Pam, Kui, Riale, Tang, Tac, Tangha, and Yvonne. I want to thank you, all of you, for your commitment to hearing every single voice across the district, even if it's in a different language. I also want to express my gratitude to the Superintendent Guerrero and his leadership team for your support and for the opportunity to lead the Language Access and Multilingual Strategies for the district. Forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sager.
Chair de Pass, can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Mary Fair, can you tell us how many languages and dialects we have in our district at this time, obviously always changing, but?
Always changing. At this time, we have 110 languages.
110?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And I want to note that the resolution is translated into five safe harbor languages, including Chinese, Russian, Somali, Spanish, and Vietnamese. Thank you again, Ms. Sager. Do I have a motion as a second to adopt Resolution 6371, Resolution Proclaiming the Celebration of International Translation Day at Portland Public Schools?
So moved.
Director Konstam moves. Director Brim Edwards seconds the adoption Resolution 6371. Is there any board discussion?
I just want to say thank you to our translation folks. I think, Mary Fair, I loved what you said at the end of hearing every voice and wanting to ensure that. And I know that I speak some Spanish, but it means that I'm limited in being able to hear every voice, and so your work is essential to this community. So just deep gratitude for our translation services.
I share that. And I also would like to say that I think we've made incredible strides in this area in the last several years. And for me, one of the most difficult and heartbreaking moments I've had in this work was meeting with a group of special education parents who, for many years, had no translation services in their IEP meetings or any of their efforts to navigate their children's path and to advocate for their children's needs. And, you know, we've developed that whole toolkit through special education in our supported languages and so many, so much other really significant progress. And, Mary Fair, you deserve a lot of credit for your leadership with that, but to our whole team, it just makes such a difference for our kids and families.
Thank you. I'm also a second language learner when I went to school in Guadalajara, and I really appreciate the effort the district has made to be more inclusive and hear from, not just to say, speak out, but to hear from people who speak languages other than English. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
The board will now vote on Resolution 6371, Resolution Proclaiming the Celebration of International Translation Day at Portland Public Schools. The Portland Public Schools Board of Education hereby promotes September 30th as a day to celebrate International Translation Day and encourages staff, students, and community to observe, recognize, and celebrate the language, culture, heritage, and economic contributions of translators, interpreters, terminologists, and other language professionals to Portland, Oregon, and the United States through relevant activities that feature translated literature, reflecting on the work of a translator or listening to the lived experience of a translator. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6371 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Weinberg officially voting.
Yes.
Thank you. Well, now here, thank you, Ms. Sager, we'll now hear comments from the Portland Association of Teachers. The agreement between PAT and Portland Public Schools allows for the association to be provided time on the agenda of regular board meeting for brief comment. Tonight, we have PAT Vice President Gwen Sullivan here to provide brief comments. Thank you. Go ahead, Gwen.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Board of Directors, Superintendent, thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. As you said, Gwen Sullivan, Vice President, Portland Association of Teachers. I go by she/her. And I am actually here tonight to talk to you about one of the contracts that you're being asked to accept, a whole slew of new contracts, but I'm asking you to take a look and vote against one of them, which is the TTF Solutions, has to do with the deaf and hard-of-hearing. And the reason for this, the reason why I'm coming to you tonight for this is because, well, actually, a few reasons. One, it's just a clear violation of our district and PAT are mutually agreed-upon contract. It's basically contracting out. But because this is so clear of a violation, it would lead us to file a grievance and then possibly go to arbitration, which would end up, you know, bringing more, the amount that is in the budget for this contract, the $182,560, will soon go much higher because of legal costs. And this is not the place where we want to be. We don't want to be adversarial about this. And I think that when we could have this money, be going straight into classrooms and working with students, that's what we want. And so, speaking of students, I'd like to offer the fact that we have on-the-ground educators that currently work with these students, deaf and hard-of-hearing. And our educators who do this work actually have some better solutions than what is being proposed in this virtual agreement. They have offered the idea of having halftime positions, offering this to retired or eligible educators that are currently in the community. ASL professors or members of the deaf community that already have, that are educators, as well as offering existing educators that are working some flexibility, some overage pay, a choice, so they can volunteer to take this existing position on and help the incoming student population. Also, they've talked about the flexibility in the form of virtual meetings and instruction and how, when practical and possible, they could actually meet the students' needs even better. And maybe we should be exploring educators that actually live in the state or educators that, I don't know, maybe live out of state. But this would ensure that we aren't going to another virtual company that doesn't really connect with our students. And I think there's a lot more work to be done and creative solutions if we sit down together to actually work on the betterment of our kids. So if you have any questions about this one, I will do my best to answer, as well as one of our staff people, Musanti, who's out in the audience right now. Otherwise, you know, email us if you have questions, but I really urge you to pull this contract out and vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And if you'll bear with us, we're hoping to have some discussion. Next, the board will vote on the consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items you'd like to pull for discussion, we will set those aside for discussion after the vote.
I'd like to pull the TTF Solutions Contract Number 907-07-PS for discussion after the consent agenda.
Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
I'll second that.
Okay. I was just going to ask for a motion as second to, I'm sorry, a motion as second to adopt the consent agenda minus the Contract Number 90707-PSTTF Solutions. Do I have a motion as second to adopt the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Director Scott moves. Director Julia Brim Edwards seconds the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there any board discussion on the consent agenda? Do we want to discuss this now?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. The board will now vote, thank you, Director Scott, the board will now vote on Resolution 6372 through 6373. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Weinberg voting.
Yes.
Do we have discussion for the item that was pulled?
Yeah, I had talked to our PAT, sorry, I do that all the time. Having been a PTA mom, I have to remember PAT. I talked to our PAT president yesterday evening, and there were just some concerns about, again, the unfair labor practices in this, potential in this outsourcing of teaching positions. And so, actually had a conversation today with some of our staff. And so Superintendent Guerrero, I wondered if there was any staff that wanted to speak to this from the district's perspective.
Sure. Director Lowry and directors, we have any number of staff who could speak to this topic, just to shed more detail here. So if you want to start off with a specific question?
I think, you know, the concern, I think, for all of us, the heart of this is what best serves our students and especially students who are deaf and hard-of-hearing. How do we provide them with the most equitable services? And so, I've heard the concern from the union about what this does for the teachers, and I want to hear this protection from staff about what approving this contract and what not approving this contract would do for our students.
Thank you, Director Lowry. Good evening. Director Superintendent Sharon Reese, Chief of Human Resources, here to answer your questions. Our Senior Director of Columbia Regional Programs, Dr. Lisa McConaughey, and our Director of Employ and Labor Relations, Genevieve Rowe, who's been working with PAT on this concern that they have raised regarding this contract. So, Dr. McConaughey can speak to those questions and give you a little bit of background on the Columbia Regional Program, because it's quite unique at Portland Public Schools. And Ms. Rowe can speak to the discussions with PAT. I'd like to start out just by saying that it is a shared interest between PAT and PPS that we hire locally and that we hire PAT members. And we are in a situation at this point in time where we are significantly short-staffed. So we don't consider this an either-or, we consider this a both-and. So I will let Dr. McConaughey speak to the Columbia Regional Programs and the need for this contract.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, Chair de Pass, members of the board, Superintendent Guerrero. So I'd like to give you just a brief overview of Columbia Regional Inclusive Services. We are a program of Portland Public Schools. We've been part of PPS since 1983. We serve children, we're a program through the Department of Education. We serve children with disabilities that are identified specifically in statute. There are children who are blind visually impaired, deaf or hard-of-hearing, children with severe orthopedic impairments, traumatic brain injury, and deaf blindness, and children with autism, excuse me. We are unique in that we serve 22 school districts across Multnomah County, Clackamas County, Hood River, and Wasco County. We serve students from birth through age 21. We have about 100 staff that are all PPS staff. We serve over 4,500 students. Our mission is to go out to where students are at, so students can stay in their local communities. We provide a level of expertise that allows students to get the needed services that they need. Our staff are incredibly specialized. I am so proud of Columbia Regional Program. Our staff are dedicated, they are passionate, and they are hardworking. As Sharon said, we are not here because this was our first choice. We have experienced an extreme staffing shortage. It's a national shortage for teachers of the deaf and hard-of-hearing. It's also a shortage in our state. I have worked, in fact, with Courtney Westling to see if we could create some legislation similar to what we have in place for speech-language pathologists, that our department, excuse me, our Department of Education really needs to support our districts and our staff in attracting qualified personnel. We used to have a program here in Oregon for teachers of the deaf and hard-of-hearing, and that has since closed. Hopefully, that will reopen, and hopefully that will help to alleviate some of our issues. Right now, our concern was that our staff were coming back with high caseloads, upwards of 30 on their caseload. We are at the very beginning of the year, and we know that those students are just going to keep coming. We also know that our staff are working both virtually and in person. We know that from the Department of Education, we're required to be in person when students are in person. When we can allow our staff to work virtually, we do that. It is efficient, so we're not driving from place to place. But we do have students in person in all four of our counties. We have worked to recruit, to find staff. We've worked with HR. We have hired retirees when we can find them. We have two currently working for us. We welcome staff when we can find them, would appreciate referrals. We currently have a potential applicant who's an American Sign Language interpreter, so not a teacher. We're hoping to hire her on an emergency license. We would pair her with a teacher over the year, and then that would eliminate already a position that was contracted for next year. So we already have a plan. That being said, if we find qualified applicants, we will terminate the contract. We really, again, our culture is important to us at Columbia Regional. We want staff in person here in Oregon. That is the best way forward. We have not determined which caseloads, what caseloads, the services would be provided virtually. We would work with our staff at Columbia Regional to determine which of those students would be provided services from the Contracting Services Agency. We do have several students, for example, in OLA across our four counties, that are in virtual services. So those would likely be the students that would be served by the virtual, and again, this is just a stopgap. Again, we have caseloads already high, we have referrals, and we do have staff on leave. If we don't need to use the contract, we won't use the contract. We're just trying to be proactive in a way to support our staff and really to get the needs met. We're required to serve children, and so we're trying to find ways to serve the kids on our caseloads. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just wanted to say, I really appreciated the few minutes we spent today talking about these issues, particularly because I'd heard that there were some solutions in the room. And one of them was to allow educators that are local to teach remotely. Another was to provide four halftime jobs to fill the two FTE. And then the final, you know, solution, they're thinking creatively here, was to add to existing workloads, which it sounds like might be untenable, that they're high already due to the shortage.
And we would be willing to add to caseloads. So, for example, right now, we have about 55 students that we need to distribute to 10 teachers, who already have caseloads of 35. And I don't know if all 10 would be willing, but there's only so much time in the day. But certainly, we would go, if, you know, if this goes forward, we would work with our current staff to see who would be willing to take more students to reduce any of the contracting need.
Thank you. And one of the benefits of having, you know, all parties, all stakeholders in the room is the opportunity to, you know, when I hear, you know, provide four halftime jobs, I'm assuming that means there are four people, but it sounds like there aren't. It sounds like the positions have been open for two years and have been open and no one has materialized.
Over the last year, we filled three positions. But unfortunately, we had five, and we had one that left in August. We had a teacher leave in August. And again, if, you know, I would be open to suggestions, I would, you know, if there are those four applicants, we would be happy to interview them.
I'm just going to throw a question out there. Would this issue benefit by a two-week break, like to put it on the next agenda in early October, to allow time to do that problem solving and come back and vote on it on that date?
I do have a concern currently of the need to serve students that are currently on our caseloads.
I would not support that, just because we know we have students that are not being served.
Chair de Pass? I would welcome that, just given the fact that the issue was raised. And I haven't had a chance, just with work and everything today, to look at all the information on the contract. So I would benefit from that versus having a vote tonight.
Okay. And then the other thing I want to bring up is that we have kind of committed to ourselves to be child-centric, and we have students that are hard-of-hearing that need help now. Do you have any other comments or questions from anybody? I also value, you know, place a high value on hiring locally.
Absolutely.
For reasons of sustainability and just, you know, worker equity. It just, it sounds to me like there is no one here that can do that job right now. Is that correct?
Yes. Dr. McConaughey did not mention, I think, outreach to retirees that they have attempted as part of the recruiting efforts. I do want to point out that it is not our intention, and we have stated this to our PAT partners, that we would stop the efforts that we have been talking about, about other solutions. Those would be ongoing. So again, this is not an either-or. Either we have this contract or we work on those efforts. This is a both-and.
I appreciate that orientation. I think a lot of the work that we're doing now is both-and. We have to hold multiple truths at the same time. That's what we do in racial equity work, both-and. I'm going to suggest, then, as a board, that we actually do vote on it tonight.
And the other thing I want to point out about this contract is it is an on-call services contract. And so Superintendent, I hope you will keep surprised of the conversations between staff and PAT and that we can take up a lot of the suggestions that have come forward from PAT and see if they bear fruit, and hopefully they do, and reduce or hopefully eliminate our need to use the services that we contract for here, and we're none the worse for it. We're not out any sunk funds. It's an hourly on-call services contract. So I would feel much more comfortable if we had that in place and we can make sure that we can serve our kids, and at the same time, we pursue any and every creative and innovative solution that comes along.
And I do just want to add that the postings are still posted, so if people apply or we know people that want to apply, we are simultaneously taking all this action. And there are two retirees currently working to fill in the gaps.
And we have contacted our other retirees, but we didn't get any interest.
Okay. There's a lot of in-migration happening still, so I'm stationed somewhat at the Oregon Department of Motor Vehicles while people are registering from out of state. Chair de Pass, can I? Yes, please, Director Brim Edwards.
So I just wanted to clarify. So say there is a vote tonight, and it's approved. There's no sort of minimum contract amount we have to spend or minimum tenure, so it just, so literally if tomorrow somebody local showed up that was a PAT member, you could, you wouldn't need to use the service?
No, there's a 30-day buyout.
I'm sorry. There was someone person was shaking their head, and the other person was?
Oh, sorry. No, no. Oh, there's a 30-day buyout of the contract, but that means that we wouldn't work with the contractors. We would buy out the contract, which would be minimal compared to finding somebody, and then we would hire and move on.
I'm sorry, what's the 30-day buyout? How much is?
Oh, I'm sorry, I don't have that figure on top of my head.
I'm sure it's not material, but I'm curious.
I don't have that on the top of my head.
So you just, the process would be you just notify them and it would suspend the contract or?
Yes. And actually, the contract hasn't even been signed, so it's not an executed contract, so I'm not sure.
But if we did use someone, if we did use someone and we started them, and we chose to end their assignment before the 30 days, we'd have to pay for them for 30 days.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Just wondering what the exposure was.
But we can find out how much.
Okay. And I think Director Green has a comment.
So I'm totally opposed to outsourcing to someone who's outside of our thing. I feel like, I feel like we should be using, we should be using our people. We should make sure that we have exhausted all measures before we move on to the next. We should be, I feel like we should be reaching out. I understand that there's a policy around our retirees where there's a certain I understand that there's a policy around our retirees where there's a certain time after they retire before we can hire them back. I feel like in a situation like this, because we're in a pandemic, that we find out if there's a way to, I don't know. We're doing all these other things because of the pandemic, so maybe we can look at this because of the pandemic and see if this is a policy or something that we need to reassess and find out if it's still valuable as it was then versus what we need to do right now. Because if we're going to allow somebody that we don't know to virtually teach our kids, why wouldn't we be allowing somebody that we do know to virtually teach them? If we got a 30-day, if we're going to sign this contract and have a 30-day buyout, and again, I just saw this this morning at 10:00, and I haven't had a chance to really go through it. And I was really under the impression that as we move forward, that we weren't going to be making decisions on things that we haven't had enough time to adequately go through. And I understand that they've been doing this for a long time, but I can't comfortably make a decision without having had it. So, I would actually be not wanting to vote on it. I would be wanting to pull it or postpone it altogether so that we have time, because I'm just, I don't, I understand that this is for the kids, and the kids need to be the first priority, but I feel like we need to make sure that we have exhausted all possible resources. And then we need to go back to the PAT and say, "Look, this is what we're going to do. You've got 30 days to come up with a viable solution, something that we believe is going to work," because we cannot afford to go another two years waiting on getting something, waiting to get something done. We can't afford to do that. So, what is another option that's not going to cost us any money? Right now, we're going to say, if we say sign, then we sign, and then they say, "We've got somebody." Now, we've got to pay for 30 days. So, why not give the 30 to 60 days out the gate and not sign anything? That's my take on it.
My question is, what else can we do? I mean, it's been open for two years, and we've heard from our staff, the outreach they've done.
We can revise our policy around the retirees that can come in.
Is there someone that would be eligible for that?
The ACA Health Insurance Requirement that you're referring to, that does, that would not prevent us from hiring a retiree tomorrow. Unfortunately, we don't know of any retirees who are willing or interested. We already have two hired and onboard. So, if we, if we knew them, that six-month issue would not be a barrier to us hiring them tomorrow.
I have a question. So, you said this position stuff been posted for two years, right? So, what have we been doing in the meantime to educate our kids?
Oh, yes. So, in the meantime, what we've done is, as I said, we have worked with the Department of Education to look at some legislation. We have gone, prior to COVID, we signed up for conferences and had conference tables, so we were marketing PPS, Columbia Regional Inclusive Services. We have talked to our staff to see if they know anybody. We've got on Facebook, LinkedIn, Indeed. We've contacted all the universities that have deaf and hard-of-hearing programs across the nation and talked about, you know, having people come on emergency licenses, finish up their practicums here. I've reached out to HR to see if we could do moving stipends. Again, most of the staff or the teachers, potential teachers, are coming from outside of Oregon. I've also asked about the idea of our grant, providing funding for teachers to pursue a master's program. So, I, in our Blind Vision Impaired Program, there's a program at Portland State for teachers of the visually impaired. We've hired three par educators. They've gone through the Portland State program, and they roll into teachers in our program. We're trying to establish that kind of relationship with the university. Those efforts are ongoing, and I should mention, too, that they're statewide. We're not the only regional inclusive services with a need. So, there's unfilled positions across the state, and then we all vie for the same positions. So, we're working as a group to really recruit to Oregon.
I think the, what I understood, Director Hollins, to ask is, how have we been serving the students?
I was curious about that as well. Not the activities related to fill in...
So, appreciate all of that and your hard work to recruit, but I think we're also interested in what have we been doing for the students in this time?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And it's also, what are we, so if we're asking about allowing more time to be considerate, and we do get our materials pretty early, we get them on Thursdays. Not everybody has time on Thursdays, and not everybody has times on Fridays. I would be one of them. But I'm wondering if, the question I heard was, are we, how are the children being served?
Right.
How are the children being served? And if they have been served less well, would two weeks of time to consider all options make a difference to those kids?
Right. So, right now, as we transitioned back from distance learning from the pandemic, over the course of this month, our teachers have literally been trying to find where students are at. We have students that have transitioned to different districts. They're going, moving to the online programs. So, our itinerary teachers, we're not connected statewide to any kind of synergy. So, for example, if you're the teacher in Gresham Barlow, you have to drive out to Gresham Barlow, reach out to your case manager, and find out where that student's at. So, that's really what our teachers have been doing right now. They've also been, we delivered a tremendous amount of equipment. We're getting the equipment back. We have students that are transitioning to the online programs. Right now, I can tell you that our teachers are hanging on, but we're at capacity. And then, as I said, we had a, we probably wouldn't, we would not be here had our teacher in August not resigned. So, when our teacher in August resigned, that left a bigger hole for us in our school-age services. Two weeks, probably, it probably won't make a huge difference, so if that's what's helpful for the board. However, again, we have 36 students with a teacher on leave that will, our teachers will be working a lot harder, and I'm not sure they can get to all those students. So, we have a teacher right now on leave who had 36 students on her caseload.
So, I'm going to be voting yes on this tonight, and I really hope we do vote on this tonight, because for me, while I wish that we had local teachers to do this, for me, it's that we need to be serving our students. And the fact that this is a, you know, contract where we can end it, where if we find people tomorrow, we can make a change, we're not locked into anything, but our students are getting the critical services they need, for me, there's no other option but than to vote yes. And I think you've gotten clear direction from the board that our desire is to continue to work with PAT, to come up with other solutions, but that in the shortfall, we need this measure to help serve our students. So, I will be encouraging us to vote tonight, because I think this is of some urgency, and I will be voting yes, because I think it's what's in our students' best interests at this time.
Director Scott?
Thanks. I'm struggling, because everything I've learned about this issue, I've learned in the last 20 minutes. So, I don't know if there were earlier emails that were missed today during the workday. I have no idea. Yeah. So, I think that's what I'm struggling with. One of the questions I have, which I'm going to pose, but I don't think you should answer it until we look at this first, but issues around the collective bargaining agreement were raised today. And one of the things that I would like to know as a board member is staff's view on those collective bargaining agreement issues, but I'm not sure we should be discussing those in open session. I think we should probably be discussing those in executive session. I also don't think we should delay this board meeting, because there's lots of other things to do that. So, I would just, I would put that out there. I won't be comfortable until I have a sense, because, you know, I just, I think it's important for us as a board to know whether we are, in fact, potentially in violation of the CBA or not. And so, I'd like to have that conversation before moving forward. I think the other thing that I just, I have no, I haven't heard as clearly as you have stated, the impact on our students in the next two weeks. What I think I've heard is, yes, there will be an impact, but it's not devastating, which is why, again, I just, I think rushing into a decision, and again, maybe I'm the only one. If everyone else has been briefed, I apologize, but I just, I feel like I need some more information before moving forward.
I can provide a little bit of information about the conversations that we've been having with PAT over the past two weeks, because we did notify them that we were in this position, and this is the last resort to get the service that the students need until we can hire internally. So, we've been in contact with them throughout the process. We've had a couple of meetings with them at length to discuss, to brainstorm together, like how can we, what other resources are there out there? What do you know of? What can, you know, help us come up with creative solutions so we don't have to do this? And we assured them, and just this, like we've assured you, that this is not going to displace a current PPS employee, and there is no intention to displace teachers down the road. This is just to get us to a place that's manageable with this gap for these 36 students, and then the additional students that are coming in all the time, because we're getting referrals all the time that we can't say, "Sorry, we're full." So, and I have said this to PAT leadership, and I've said this to some of you, but we understand how important it is that union jobs maintain, stay-union jobs, and the intention is that these continue to be union jobs. And until we can fill the positions with PAT members, we are just stuck and need to get these students served until we can hire someone. So, I know that it does not feel good, and that it's, you know, those union, you know, those union jobs, it's so important for them to stay-union jobs. And so, there's also potential that someone from this agency becomes a PAT member. They enjoy working for PPS, and then we hire them on as a permanent person. So, just wanted you to know that context around the conversations that we've had with them, and that we are continuing to have those conversations. So, even today, we had a lot of discussion about what other things can we try, what, you know, who are the people that can take on additional kids? And so, we're constantly having those conversations with folks.
And just to be clear with my colleagues, the timeline for me was that last night, I was called by the PAT president, because she and I had a relationship last year when I was chair. We met regularly. She tried to call Chair to pass, and she wasn't available, so called me. And I then called staff to say, "There's some concern here. I'd like to pull this off the consent agenda." My initial hope was, can we come up to an agreement before the meeting tonight, so we can have smooth sailing, and this can go forward on the consent agenda? And then today, when that looked like it wasn't going to happen, it was, "I'd like to pull this from the consent agenda so that we can have conversation around it and make this decision." And then we had a brief conversation this afternoon, just to give us some more background. So, it was Michelle and I were on that call. So, just so you all don't think like we're having all these secret meetings, and there's things you're missing, that was, it was a very short timeline of, this is what happened quickly.
So, just cause I'm clear, because I want to make sure it's clear that, so kids are still getting served right now, right? So, they're...
There will be, it will be difficult, sorry, excuse me. It will be difficult to serve all of the students with a teacher on leave. We will have to reassign 36 students.
Right. So, I hear what you're saying, is it'd be difficult, but then they're still getting served, even though it'd be difficult. Just like we had a teacher with 36 or 38 kids in the classroom. It might be difficult for her to do it, for them to do it, but they still would be getting served. I just wanted to make sure that was clear, that they're still getting served, that they're not getting served.
I can't say that 100%, because our teachers have to travel to a building. They're not in one location. So, for example, the 36 students are in PPS, but they're across the entire district in variety of schools. So, teachers have to travel to the buildings to get to the students.
Only so many hours in a day.
Right. And only so many hours that kids are in school.
So, okay. So, are they getting served, or are they not getting served?
There's a portion of kids that we're still redistributing right now, and then we have 30 kids in referral. So, we have 30 kids waiting to be eligible, so we have to do the evaluation, the assessments, and then they become eligible, and then we have to serve them. So, things are being delayed and not served to the best of our ability.
Do we have compliance issues, ADA issues, around the level of service that these students are entitled to?
So, we have the services on the IFSP and the IEP, and if we don't provide those services, then we're responsible for compensatory education. So, we'll have to make up those services in the summer.
And we're in that zone, likely?
Likely.
And so, if we bring this other company on, how soon will our kids be able to get served once this, if this contract gets approved?
So, we're hoping to work with the staff at Columbia Regional and determine which kids, like that are in referral, that we can move to the virtual services, which kids on this caseload for the teacher on leave that we can move to the virtual services. So, we'll work with our staff to determine, and hopefully, as soon as possible, those people would start to join our team.
Do we have a timeline for that? Is that three weeks, four weeks?
No, we would be looking at Monday.
That does help. I don't have a sense about where everybody's at. I thought I heard a few minutes ago that the majority of the board would like to wait to vote on this when they have more information.
Can I make a motion? I'm going to make a motion to hold this over for the next board meeting, and then we'll know where the board stands.
I second that motion.
Shall we take a vote on that?
I'd like to just say why I'm going to support that. I think there's been a compelling, to support them, so it was first and seconded, right?
Yes, it was first and seconded.
And I think the staff has made a compelling case, how we need to serve our students. I also think we all got new information today, just to Director Green's point and Scott's, is like, there may have been a lot of conversations happening, but we didn't know that. And, you know, I'll be, I think the onus is not just on district staff to try and do something over the next two weeks if we wait, but also with PAT also to come to the table, because I think it's untenable to continue, it sounds like, to continue what we're doing. And if we have a solution at hand, then we should utilize it. But as I say, partly, it's just it coming at the last minute of like, hey, you have to approve it, or there's not going to be services, or it's, it just gives me pause, like not just a regular contract on the agenda.
And I would say this was, I found out today in our briefing, that this was supposed to be on the board meeting, contract agenda, last meeting, and it was not because the staff was trying to work with PAT to come up with those solutions and to get local teachers in the places, and they were not able to do so. So, now it's back before us. So, I, again, you know, because it's a 30-day buyout, I think we need to vote on it tonight, and I think we need to vote yes, so that our students are served, and send forward with the marching orders to continue to work with PAT to try to f on this. Because I, again, for me, it's about serving our students as soon as possible, especially our students that are on IEPs, that are special need students that need additional services. I think, I think because this is not a deep commitment contract, if we can get our kids served more and better now, that that's what I would like to see us do.
Madam Chair, I just want to point out that the motion on the floor is to postpone it, so the conversation should just be about the postponement of it, not the original motion.
And I'm going to say...
Thank you, Director Hollins.
Thank you for that clarification. That's correct. I was prepared to support the contract tonight after hearing today, but I think that I'm hearing from my colleagues that additional two weeks...
I don't think we've taken a vote on that yet.
We need to vote on that. We've got a, I'm sorry, a motion and a second.
Yeah. And I'll just say, just part of the discussion on this, I am very possibly going to support this when it comes back. I just don't feel comfortable voting without the information and the questions answered at this point.
So, we're going to vote on postponing this decision until the next board meeting, which I believe is October 12th. All those in favor of postponement, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, I'm sorry, all those in favor, all those not in favor?
No.
No. We have two noes. Are there any abstentions? The resolution or the motion passes 522 with Student Representative Weinberg voting? Thank you for that rich discussion.
Chair to pass if I could for a sec.
Sure.
I'm kind of disappointed in all of you, because our goal is to center students, and this solution seems to be centering students, but it only seems that we're centering students but, there's all these buts. But not when this, not when this other thing. So, if we are centering students, then we should be doing that, and I don't think we
I appreciate your comments, and I think you're right. I think we're, in this moment, we have board members that are asking for additional information, and we're going to delay our decision for two weeks. We're going to now turn to student, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit lost in my script. We're going to turn to student and public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to review our guidelines for public comment. First, the board thanks you for your time to attend this meeting and provide your comments. Public input and your input informs our work, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen. To that end, I would ask each of us to tuck our phones away during testimony, so we can give our full attention to the people in front of us. Our board office may follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. We request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter, and if you have additional materials or items you would like to provide to the board... And if you have additional materials or items you would like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask that you email them to publiccomment@pps.net. Publiccomment@pps.net. Please make sure when you begin your comment that you clearly state your name and spell your last name, and you'll have three minutes to speak. You'll hear a sound after three minutes, which means it's time to conclude your comments. Ms. Bradshaw, do we have anyone signed up for student or public comment?
Yes. Xander Levine.
Can you hear me? Thank you. I have my district-issued Chromebook. So thanks for that. Xander Levine, X-A-N-D-E-R-L-E-V-I-N-E. Hello, board members. I hope you're doing well and are focused on the idea about mandating COVID-19 vaccines for all eligible PPS students. Let's start with a few things. Like mentioned by the public health professionals at the work session, this vaccine is safe, effective, and free. I don't think I need to spend my time up here talking about that because we already know that. We trust the science, so why are we waiting? The longer we wait to do this, the more students and community members will become infected with this virus and die. You need to do everything you can to make sure school is safe, and so far, that's not happening to the fullest extent possible. That can change now. You must have a more aggressive approach about COVID-19 vaccine misinformation and start promoting the vaccine better, even if you don't mandate it soon enough. Tonight, I ask you take action before December 1st. You as a board already require that teachers get the shot. The governor has already mandated that all Oregon employees show proof of vaccination by October 18th or file for an exemption. This vaccine requirement for students would be in line with the state's trajectory. Flu season is upon us, and cases are only bound to rise. Do this for the students who have immunocompromised family members at home. Do this for students who are vaccinated and still walk into school scared. Do this for the educators, like my own teacher, who wears two masks or three masks and still fear that they will get this virus and die. Mandate the COVID-19 vaccine for all eligible PPS students and be a role model for districts all over the nation. Please be a leader, create change, and save lives. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sandra Kim, K-I-M, and I'm a freshman in high school. After a year and a half of online learning, I really wanted to return to school, and I appreciate the safety measures that PPS has put in place to make this possible. On paper, the safety protocols in the Swiss cheese model make schools safer for students and staff. We know that widespread masking, distancing, ventilation, and testing are some of the most important safety measures we have, but for them to work, they have to actually be followed. At my school, there are always multiple people in classrooms and hallways not wearing their masks over their noses and mouths. Sometimes they're asked to adjust their masks, but not always. Some blatantly ignore teachers when asked to wear their masks properly. I've even seen students eat and sing unmasked during class. Distancing is very important, but PPS's language of three feet to the extent possible has given schools too much flexibility. In many of my classes, students sit right next to each other, nowhere near three feet apart. During passing period, there's zero distancing in the hallways. I end up being late to many of my classes because I'm waiting for the halls to clear. If people aren't wearing masks properly and aren't physically distanced, good ventilation becomes even more important. There are classrooms in my school where 40 kids are jammed elbow to elbow in rooms with no windows. This is bad enough for students, but teachers have to stay in these classrooms for hours. This is not okay. Can we talk about lunch now? When it rains, some schools have covered outdoor areas. Others have teams of volunteers who have purchased tents and plan to put them up every day. But what about schools like mine that don't have these resources? My school's plan is to cram up to 1,500 students into one lunchroom and two gyms for a 35-minute lunch. This is not safe, so I have no choice but to eat lunch outside, standing in the rain. PPS has neglected students' needs and hasn't provided safe options for the most dangerous time of the day. The Swiss cheese model is only effective if the recommendations are being followed. Every day, it's hard to focus in class because I don't feel safe. I don't want to go back to online learning. I want to stay in school, but I need school to be a safe place where students and teachers can focus on education without worrying that they will get a deadly disease and spread it to their families. I know this is hard, and I don't have the answers. I'm only 14. That is why I'm depending on you to keep PPS students and staff safe during this school year. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Kim McGair.
Good evening, directors. Kim McGair, M-C-G-A-I-R. I'm the parent of a PPS sophomore. I want to start by thanking the district and especially all of the district staff that's here tonight for, that worked so hard on reopening and mitigation measures for all the great work you've done in getting our schools open successfully. We are almost four weeks into school, and joy does not begin to just capture how parents and kids alike feel about being back in school. And PPS opening has been a tremendous success with respect to COVID. Right now, the COVID dashboard says there's 53 cases in our schools. That's 0.1% of the 50,000 students you have, 0.1%. I see a sign here with 302 cases. Don't know where that number's from. It's 0.6% of your students. Opening has been a tremendous success. I was moved to speak tonight after watching the board meeting two weeks ago where some of our PPS educators conducted a die-in and others spoke tearfully to you about their COVID fears. We cannot make decisions about something as critically important as the education of more than 50,000 students based on anecdotes. We must make decisions based on data and facts. One of the risks of making decisions based on anecdotes is that you don't get full and complete information. For example, one of the educators who spoke to you two weeks ago, tearfully about her child getting COVID allegedly from PPS, the reality is that she had traveled to Florida too shortly before school started with her two young children in the heart of Delta. She posted about the trip publicly. Let me be clear, I don't begrudge her her trip to Florida. That's fabulous. But you can't travel to Florida in the middle of Delta and then come here and advocate to have our schools closed because PPS isn't safe. We can't make decisions on anecdotes. We can't make decisions on feelings or motives. We also can't make decisions based on the loudest voices, the people who are here telling you that schools are not safe or that we shouldn't be open. They are an incredibly small minority of your constituents. After the last board meeting, I was asked, well, where are the parents? The parents are parenting. They're at practice, they're making lunches, they're helping with homework, they're doing BAZ, and they're reading, they're doing parenting. They can't be here at 6:30 every two weeks to tell you to please keep schools open. You cannot read anything into their absence. Finally, I want to briefly address the vaccine mandate. I am very pro-vaccine. My family got vaccinated the minute that we could be vaccinated. But the data from Multnomah County shows that you don't need a vaccine mandate to get our kids vaccinated. 75% of them already are. 94% of the people who've responded to the survey are vaccinated. What is a vaccine mandate going to do? It's going to keep some kids out of school. And who are those kids? We know that those are our low-income kids, those are our kids with little access to educate, to healthcare, and our racially, our racial minorities. You don't need, there's no reason to keep anybody out of school after the last 15 months. Whatever you do, just don't do it yet. Portlanders are vaccinating their children voluntarily. They don't need a mandate. All the mandate's going to do is hurt a small minority of kids for a very small bump in vaccination rates. Thank you. Thank you.
PPS parent. PPS parent. PPS parent. PPS parent. PPS parent.
Thank you. Josh Himmel?
Do we have any further comment?
Yes, Josh Himmel.
Good evening. My name is Josh, last name is H-I-M-E-L. I have two kids within the district. First, I want to thank you for your hard work and difficult choices during the pandemic. In these complicated times, you will be criticized no matter what you do. I understand that you as a school district are considering a COVID vaccine mandate for students. Normally, experts in public health determine such mandates, and school districts play a role in carrying them out. PPS is an educational institution and not a medical one. It is unusual for a school district to make medical decisions for its students, and one would expect desperate circumstances to justify such a transfer of authority away from the normal decision-makers. This makes this an odd time for PPS to consider taking on a role so outside your expertise. In Oregon, case and death rates are now well below their peaks from late August and still dropping, and Multnomah County itself has among the lowest case rates in all of Oregon. Multnomah County also has vaccination rates among the highest in the state. Approximately 79% of adults and 75% of eligible children are already vaccinated, and roughly 60 additional children are vaccinated every day without a mandate. In PPS, as I'm sure you know, 95% of staff are vaccinated, and as the other speaker just mentioned, the PPS COVID-19 dashboard shows no upward trend in cases. Overall, for the population relevant to PPS, I see high vaccination and low cases, but no cause for drastic new measures. To put this in some perspective, a tragic total of three, three Oregon children have died from COVID-19 in the entire pandemic, 18 months. However, every 12 months, year after year, more children die from each of the following causes separately. Motor vehicle accidents, firearms, suicides, drownings, heart disease, falls, cancer, poisoning, or drug overdose. What regulatory role or parental right or individual student right are you considering taking over in these more deadly realms? None, I assume. In short, I wouldn't ask or expect that you take over the role of healthcare decision-maker from students, their families, and the qualified experts in healthcare and public health unless there was clear evidence of a need for your involvement. I don't see such evidence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me. My name is Pedro Anglada Cordero, A-N-G-L-A-D-A-C-O-R-D-R-O. I am a parent from a child who attends PPS. I also, for the record, I also am a PPS employee. Nevertheless, I am here as a parent. I'll start by reminding this school board that during the last board meeting session on September 14th, a PPS COVID dashboard was presented to you. At that time, PPS district officials, including Dr. Bird, could not make sense of the numbers and charts that were presented to you regarding COVID-19 cases in schools, numbers of isolations or quarantine amongst students, et cetera. Despite the lack of clarity in such an important matter, this board moved swiftly to express their excitement about the new dashboard. Move on with the protocols of the meetings as if the lack of clarity, the inability of the presenters to explain about their own data was actually a serious flag, serious red flag. As far as I understand, board meetings are spaces where PPS get to inform the public. Therefore, clarity is the most important matter for the district. This is imperative in the times of a global pandemic. It comes to my attention in speaking with other members in the community, mainly parents and other educators, that this dashboard continues to be highly inaccurate. We are aware of educators and families affected by exposure who get no reflection in the dashboard, the number zero being an unequivocal indicator of their schools. Data points that may help inform the community through this dashboard include school bus routes that are canceled daily, school buildings that are not fully staffed on a daily basis, number of families on a waiting list for online learning, same families who are being encouraged to leave the district through lack of service. PPS reportedly, through their colorful pamphlets, strive for schools to be community hubs. PPS also claim to strive in dismantling systems of oppression, including white supremacy. As an institution, one has to build relationship, relationships in order to become a community hub, in order to dismantle systems of oppression and give voice to the unheard. Relationships are built with trust. Trust cannot be achieved with lack of transparency and lack of clarity. It does not take an analyst in statistics to see the inaccuracy in these systems. If it can, if I can see it, if I believe, you know, I believe you, the school board, can actually see this too. Nothing less than that. We are just asking for basic, basic information, clarity and trust. Where is the credibility of this district, and where is the credibility of the board? Thank you.
Thank you. Derek Johnson?
Hello, my name is Derek Johnson, last name J-O-H-N-S-O-N. Does anybody know who Dr. Carey Mullis is? Okay, Dr. Carey Mullis, he invented the PCR test. He said that the PCR test does not detect viruses. So why are we trying to get these tests coming out? I don't understand. I don't know what you guys are doing. Has anybody ever heard of Project Veritas? Project Veritas is, exploited the FDA, who said, one of the guys at the high up in the FDA said that what they were doing, they were trying to make some of the COVID vaccines specifically to try to kill black people. So last night, they exploited Johnson &amp; Johnson. And in Johnson &amp; Johnson, basically their high up guys were saying that kids don't need vaccines. So I'm not really understanding why you guys are trying to push the vaccine at a 99% recovery rate. So I don't, I don't, I think a lot of parents are brain fogged around here because, you know, we send our kids to daycare. If we send our kids to daycare 150 days, they come home sick maybe 20 days out of those 150 days. And you get sick two of those days. So why don't your kid get sick the other 130 days? Why don't you, why don't you get sick the other 18 days that your kid was sick on those 20 days? So I'm really kind of confused of why are we always blaming other people of their sickness? We don't pass around cancer. We don't pass another, anything else around. So I don't understand why are we doing this? And why are we trying to pressure our kids to taking tests and taking shots? I think we need to think about it a little bit differently. And another thing I just wanted to talk, touch on is our kids lunch with all the tents and all that stuff, and having our kids supposedly getting on five-gallon buckets and all that kind of stuff. And I see you guys up at the panel, you guys are sitting next to each other, and we have all these multimillionaire dollar restaurants that are, you know, you can go in a restaurant and eat and sit down. Why can't our kids go in the cafeteria and eat? All these things are scare tactics. It's all they're doing. It's all about money. That's what the guy said at Johnson &amp; Johnson, scare tactics, to scare everybody. It's ridiculous. We need to start standing up, and you guys need to start standing up for the kids. It's about the kids. It's about the kids. It's not about us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jude Holly. Is Jude here? Okay, and we have one person signed up for public comment on virtually, and that is Eric Happel. We're moving him over right now.
Sorry, am I, am I on?
You are. We can hear you. Thank you.
Cool, thank you. Sorry, I'm not in person. I am with my mother who's not well. Eric Happel, H-A-P-P-E-L, father of three daughters in PPS. And you've all heard from me a few times. So during the pandemic, I grew used to seeing doors closed, lights off, finding it hard to motivate my kids to move forward. I had to encourage my kids to reach out to friends, to come downstairs, to go outside. Like many, many, school had become a joyless burden of Google Forms and camera-less classes without interactions. Many friendships in the wind, relationships with teachers nonexistent. This year, the differences are as stark as they are joyful. Now, when my daughters get home from school, they tell me about their day, their science teacher's challenge questions, who they sit next to in math, a new friend made, a teacher that's really connecting with them. Now homework is something sometimes done together. Doors are open again in our house. The noise in the house is lighter, happier, and a lot more laughter. Learning is happening. Friendships are new or renewed. Friday roll around, and I hear my kids say they're looking forward to school again on Monday. It's been a true pleasure. PPS has done an outstanding job of getting our kids back in school and opening again for in-person learning and while being very focused on doing it safely. I want to make sure that my heartfelt thank you is heard, so thank you. Along with the opening, though, new procedures, it is important to learn and evolve. To that end, we need to take a look at the quarantine of kids who have been deemed exposed. As with, as with test and stay, we could keep many more kids safely in school. In test to stay, if deemed exposed and you don't have symptoms, the school offers you a test, and if negative, you stay in school. Recently, Montgomery County, Maryland, which has been one of the tightest counties, switched to test and stay. Likewise, Philadelphia and Utah and many others have switched to test to stay. Los Angeles Health Department released a report last week. They noted that of kids quarantined, only zero point two tested positive for COVID. That was lower than both the community rate and the in-school rate. This means that quarantining kids who were deemed exposed was not effective and was casting a net far too wide. As a result, they will now allow schools to keep exposed kids in school, but monitor them more closely. While I know this is not PPS's direct control, you are partners with Multnomah County Health Department. Last data I saw, we had about six hundred kids in quarantine for exposure. It is a little bit hard to figure that out now with the new changes to the dashboard. We too could determine how many of the kids out unquarantined tested positive for COVID. Our data likely, like others, will tell us that very few, if any, quarantined kids are testing positive for COVID. So if we put into place something like test and stay, we could immediately get most of these six hundred kids back in school, who are needlessly out of school right now. In summary, thank you, PPS, for putting the kids first in reopening schools. Now let's learn and evolve and help Multnomah County officials so we can reduce harm and keep even more kids in school. Thank you very much and have a good day.
Thank you.
That concludes who I've signed up for general public comment.
So Chair to pass, I understand that someone might have been signed up to testify on the contract issue, but because we delayed the vote and didn't actually, they were signed up to vote, they were signed up to testify on that vote. But because we took a vote to delay, we didn't do testimony on the vote. And I guess I would just ask you as chair or the board if we're interested in hearing from that, from that person who signed up.
I'm interested in hearing, sure, absolutely. And I apologize, I'm going to fail in front of everybody, my facilitation skills tonight. But if you're here.
And I don't have any.
Chair to pass, I can call the people up to speak. We had one person virtually, so I'm going to send him a quick message on email, hopefully.
Are you, are you here from Chris?
Are you Lori Ann Duggan?
Thank you, and I apologize again for missing your testimony.
Thank you for the, sorry, press this.
Yes, if you'll just state your name, your first and last, and spell your last name, please, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Lori Ann Duggan, and my last name is D-U-G-G-A-N. Good evening, distinguished board members, Superintendent Guerrero, and guests. I want to thank you for all you do to help the children and families in our district. I am one of those teachers that is serving deaf and hard-of-hearing students, and I want to reassure you that students are receiving services indeed. I love working for PPS and Columbia Regional and value being a teacher in this district. I appreciate working for a district that also values unions. Since two thousand and three, the field of deaf education has seen a drastic decline in certified teachers of the deaf. There are vacancies in every single state across our nation. It is very concerning and we have a lot of work to do, but it is not impossible as long as we continue to listen and work together. I'm deeply discouraged that Columbia Regional, a place that I love working, with hard-working and dedicated staff, that they are considering outsourcing the important work. And I am grateful to you tonight that you have delayed the vote to do hard work, to listen, and work together. I believe that conflict is growth wanting to happen. We're here for a reason. If it is a drastic decline across the nation, it is time that we work together to resolve this issue so that we can help educate a silent majority that is so deserving of all of our time, attention, and money. I am hopeful that we can continue to work together, but this can only happen with your help. I would like to speak to the caseloads and that our caseloads are too much. They are not at this time, and we have a member who is out on leave for three weeks, and the staff has banded together as we always do at Columbia Regional and help one another to serve students. I would also like to speak to another area that concerns me, and that is that there is a lack of involvement with the deaf community. It is very important that there are some deep conversations that occur regarding funding. Where is this money coming from? And also, where are the figures? We need to see more data about hiring through contract agencies. I think one big takeaway is that we have to talk to one another and listen to one another. I really look forward to some more thoughtful conversations, and I thank you so much for your time and consideration and for learning about Columbia Regional program and the great work we do. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
There was somebody else signed up at virtually, but they're not back logged in.
Does that conclude our public comment? All right, thank you all for your comments. Appreciate your voices, dissenting voices are good. I'm a big fan of conflict myself because I do believe in it as well. We're going to move on to Student Representatives Report. I'd like to take a five-minute break before we do so. Okay, I'm going to. Did everybody get their wiggles out? If you can hear me clap once. Let's get, let's get started. Everybody's so, so ramped up today. We're going to start with public comment. I'm sorry, thank you. I don't know what I would do if you weren't sitting there. The student report, the student representatives' report. Student, well, we have another meeting in forty-five minutes. We're not, we're not getting out of here. I know, I'm excited about that next meeting, so, but we want to start that one on time because we're impacting staff's evening. Student Representative Weinberg, did you want to provide your, your report?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. I wanted to start off by letting everyone know that on Thursday at about 5:00 PM, we will have the first meeting for the Council of Great City Schools Student Board Members. So hopefully that'll be a reoccurring monthly meeting for me and other student board members to connect and advance our shared goals, overcome obstacles that we encounter, kind of entering adult-centered spaces, kind of coming together to discuss the challenges of that and how to amplify our collective voice. In addition, I would like to thank the board for scheduling today's work session on mandating twelve and up COVID vaccinations. The conversations and questions that were asked tonight were very informative and a great first step. I look forward to moving forward, I look forward to moving forward with the consideration of such a mandate by unpacking what exemptions would look like and how to make reasonable accommodations of such students that do request, that do request exemptions. I'd also like to stress that the intention of such a mandate would, should not be to try and exclude students from accessing education, but rather ensure that our students and broader community are safe. I would also like to congratulate PPS students on a successful and safe climate crisis walkout on Friday. There was excellent mask wearing, and I commend all of the students who made this possible. I would also like to tap into the continuing work that PPS is doing around climate crisis response. Most importantly, our climate crisis response policy that is currently undergoing through a student engagement process. I encourage all students and all of the community to give their input on this policy that is currently on the policy committee and should be before this board for a first reading soon. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Superintendent Guerrero, would you please provide your report?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Good evening, directors. When I started this, everybody in our audience and listening from home. Let me start off by saying, and I know you'll probably appreciate this. I appreciate listening to the discourse this evening, the comments, the feedback, the input. I get the emails, I read the messages, I read every letter. They keep coming day and night, and they, they share a broad range of perspectives, all of which go into our considerations. And we're in the midst of unique circumstances. We are still in a public health crisis as we try to focus on teaching and learning. So my thoughts tonight really are directed at, in a few categories, more along the lines of in this challenging moment, celebrations, challenges, and appreciations, and a glimpse of some of the work still going on behind the scenes moving forward. And an example of that, and before I start in, you know, I want to appreciate our student representative, Jackson Weinberg, because he mentioned that for the first time in its history, the council is going to start these rolalike meetings for student board representatives. But it was Jackson's idea. I just want to make sure we give attribution for the approach of our executive director and the council to pursue it. He agreed it was a great idea, and it's going to happen now, so that's wonderful. Okay, well, let me, let me start with, we mentioned this last week regarding Latino Heritage Month. And from now until October fifteenth, we have, we always have the opportunity, but we have especially an opportunity to celebrate, recognize the power of our multiracial Latinx community, past, present, and future in this month of celebration. I want to thank the directors for acknowledging that. And as I shared in my message to all PPS family, you know, my hope as superintendent of schools is that every one of our students has many opportunities, just like I did in my youth, to experience that feeling of having their heritage and their background celebrated and also to learn more about the diverse community in which we live. So we have that opportunity to, to teach about, learn about, celebrate the enormous contributions that Latinos have made across our community and throughout the generations. And we get to do that throughout the year with all of the diverse backgrounds in our school district. Particularly want to recognize our Latinx educators, principals, staff, and community partners who are, continue to be an essential part of the fabric of the city, but also continue to help us build a more inclusive and welcoming learning experience for our students to thrive in PPS. And we want to spotlight some of those folks. So on Thursday, we will be releasing the first set of short videos that highlight just some of our incredibly talented Latino and Latina educators, students, and school administrators. We hope to continue spotlighting talented educators and staff from across PPS actually throughout the school year. So just a heads up, be on the lookout for those in your weekly newsletter on Thursday. And as we shared last week, we're pleased that more than sixty-five hundred PPS staff have reported being fully vaccinated against COVID-19 as the first K-12 school district in the state of Oregon to announce vaccine requirements for all staff. We know the importance of everyone doing their part to end this pandemic by getting vaccinated against COVID-19. So to date, that's ninety-four point seven percent of PPS staff have indicated that they are fully vaccinated against COVID-19 with a response rate for active employees around ninety-four percent. So, which as we know is much higher than, than the broader community. So thank you, everyone, for that effort. I also want to acknowledge the challenges that we're all presently facing, whether staff, students, or families. And more importantly, want to offer my appreciation at this time for your grace, your patience, your modeling kindness many have demonstrated throughout the last few weeks to the hard-working educators, school leaders, support staff, central office support staff. Thank you for navigating the last three weeks with resilience. Thank you for centering the health, the joyful learning, and overall experience of our students and their families, especially after they've been off campus for more than eighteen months. As the educational providers and leaders of Portland Public Schools, you all are the backbone of our school communities and our school system. You are what makes it possible for our schools to operate as hubs of joyful learning. To our families, I want to acknowledge that for so many of us as parents, the new processes, the shifting guidance, and other consequences brought about by this global pandemic have challenges. What we had hoped to be more of a traditional school year, so we continue to try to live through and find solutions to those obstacles. So I want to thank you for being patient, helping us come up with creative solutions, continue to hold us accountable to a high standard in providing rich, healthy, strong learning environments for your children. I know that the bus shortages, the fluctuating guidance, and just the pure exhaustion of the school year has left, left us all wanting more. So I'm proud of the work of every single person at PPS, whether in the classroom, on school buses, or in the warehouse. I hope that this week, like I will be doing, that you'll have a chance to thank someone that works at your school, in the central office, or with one another. It will take all of us to get through this moment, just as it takes all of us to build a future we could be proud of. So while we confront COVID challenges, we're still keeping our eye on the prize. So I do want to offer a glimpse forward in a celebration of an important new development that is intended to directly address an important priority for us as a district. Later this week, we'll be announcing a major grant to develop an equity-centered and racially diverse school leaders in our school system and encourage their, that candidate pool. I'm excited to announce that PPS is one of eight school districts selected from around the country through a competitive process to receive a multi-year grant to support principal pipeline work with the first installment, installment, helping us accelerate work articulated in our new strategic plan. We're incredibly grateful for the investment in dollars to PPS over the next five years to support and place a focus on the development of diverse school principals. We look forward to continued collaboration and partnership with our local colleges and universities as we work together to prepare the future workforce of our district.
Superintendent Guerrero. Superintendent Guerrero.
I want to say that we interviewed for that Wallace, the grant for the Wallace application, the grant application, let's see if I can use my words, was submitted when I was chair. And so I had the great privilege of getting to sit in an interview with the Wallace folks, with Superintendent Guerrero. And that was just an incredible experience, to see the passion that he brings, just the vision and his, you know, I know some of his expertise and have worked with him for a couple of years now, but when he was talking about the past experience he's had with programs like this, the deep work that he's done in San Francisco and Boston to really create systemic changes to help elevate educators and leaders of color, it was, I was, after that interview, I was like, how in the heck are they not going to give this to us? Just to see his mastery of this subject, his willingness to learn and grow, and to really change things for our educators and leaders of color. So I just want to say thank you, Superintendent Guerrero, for your bold leadership and for how hard you work to make things like this happen, to really change our district. And it is an honor to get to work with you, so thank you for this.
Well, thank you, Chair Lowry. You were in the interview too, so.
Former Chair Lowry. I did interrupt you a couple times, because I'm like, can I at least say one thing so that I, you know, pretend I had a role here and can take credit for this big grant, but thank you.
Well, attribution goes to the team. It's been a year in the making. It was a very comprehensive grant application, so there's folks up and down the organization who get to share credit for that one, and now we get to embark on the actual work.
Many congratulations again. That is just really fabulous. I'm looking forward to seeing what comes of that work.
Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I lost my place again. We are going to go on to committee reports. We're going to just, I think, go alphabetical, so can we start with the audit committee? Do you have any?
Uh-huh, it's not me.
We have not.
I'm looking at Director Crumstone.
And so when we have not met, I won't give a report. However, I will give a scintillating preview, which is that our P-card, the draft of our P-card audit is completed, and we'll be discussing that at our next meeting, which is in a couple weeks.
Excellent, thank you. Charter and alternative programs, Director Green.
I have this lovely report made out for me to remind me what I'm supposed to say. Thank you. So in our meeting, this was my first meeting that I got to chair. I'm going to take a moment to thank everybody that put up with me during that meeting, as I was doing a college trip, and a lot of stuff was happening in the background, kids were moving, but I've got a great team, so thank you. But in the meeting, we discussed, we received an overview of the charter and alternative school programs in the district, which was very helpful to me, because I thought we had like five. Turns out, we've got way more than five. We received an update from Terrell O'Neill on the potential for a new charter school application, which we need to approve. We'll need, we'll know more information about that and whether or not it gets approval, and if it's determined to be a complete application, then it'll come back. And that was also great to know. I'm learning so much, so it's not like you just get to say, I'm going to be a charter school today. Yeah, that's cool, fill out this application. So that was great. We got an update about facilities, including the new location of the Multiple Pathways Graduations Program located Benson High School, which are now at the Kenton Building, the beautiful Kenton Building, I might add. And it is so amazing to see all the amazing stuff that's happening at that school and how it's serving our kids, our community, not that it wasn't before, but it's great to see us doing work in it, amen? I can't say that, sorry. Oh, my goodness, I am so.
It's an establishment clause violation.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, and I'm about to be done. We also received a funding update from Chief, and I'm working on this, De Goddeau. Okay, this is my guy. He's my guy with amazing shoes. And so, but we got a funding update, and he shared with us some information on the 2021-22 student investment account, and its allocations to our CBO partners, and they're looking into that, and he's going to share some recommendations, well, staff will share recommendations with the committee before our next meeting. So that's something, they're putting some things together. They got to work with their team, they're going to get back to the rest of the team and bring some stuff back so that we can look it over. And we discussed a potential work plan for the year, and then our next meeting is coming up in October on the 6th. And so I thought it was a fantastic first meeting. I loved all the energy that everybody brought to the table, the excitement to want to work to make the charter schools better for all the students that we serve across the board. And it just felt fantastic to be in the room with my guy, who was, I mean, every time I tried to throw a question at him, he was like, I got you, I got you. Now, read this, read this, read this, read this, read some more. So thank you for all the homework you gave me. I appreciate you so much. So, and thank you for the team for putting up with me. So it's going to be a fun ride. I'm excited about what it's going to do.
Excellent. If you can do that while moving a child into a dorm room, imagine what you can do when you're just sitting in the room. We're going to move on to Intergovernmental, Director Lowry.
All right, so the Intergovernmental Committee is Director Holland, Director Green, and I, and we spent like all of last Wednesday here at BESC, it felt like. Our meeting was on Wednesday afternoon, and then we had the board retreat that evening, so we spent some quality time in this building. Ms. Westling, who is the staff person that works in Intergovernmental, was there and gave us an update on the state redistricting effort, just to kind of keep us in the loop on some of the bigger political pictures of the state. We had a great update about the I-5 Rose Quarter Project, and Director Brim Edwards attended for that portion and caught us up on some of what's happening. We had some conversations about moving Tubman and some of the considerations there. We had a lengthy conversation about the impacts of houseless camps on our schools, had some conversations, and I think I really appreciated what, one of the things Director Green said is, you know, we need to focus on our students and keeping our students safe, and we also need to make sure that we don't think just because someone's houseless that they're dangerous or a problem. And so how do we hang in that tension of setting healthy boundaries and also respecting our neighbors? And so had some great conversation with staff about some ways to up the reporting so that people are clear on how to report unsafe situations so that we can continue to protect our students. And we have about, I think it's about 3% of our students are houseless, so we also consider that those are our students as well in some of those houseless encampments. We talked about the outdoor attempt permit process and asked operations to let us know what they needed so that we could then be advocates and allies. We told Ms. Westling that we are her staff now, Herman and Gary and I, and we can call and talk to other electeds, and we asked her to put us to work so that we could help smooth things out for what PPS needs done. And then we got an update from Chief Martinick about the asymptomatic testing, which is going to be really cool. I was very concerned because we were talking, we're going to get these tubes, kids who opt-in are going to get these tubes, and they're going to have to spit into them. And I was very concerned that teachers were going to have to be doing this, and I can't imagine kindergarteners spitting into them, so, no, they go home, they take the tubes home, and they spit into them at home, and then they're collected at school, they're sealed, and collected at school. So she gave us a really, really great update. If you want all of the details, you should watch that meeting, it's on our YouTube. So I'm really excited about the asymptomatic testing, and so thankful to staff for helping expedite that so we can get that, another layer of our Swiss cheese in place as soon as possible. Our next meeting is November 17th, because we are going to be attending Council of Great City Schools trainings at the end of October, so we pushed the meeting to November.
Excellent, thank you. What a great recap. Everybody sounds like they're having so much fun in the committees, I almost kind of want to be on one again. We're going to move on to Facilities and Operations, and that would be Director Holland's.
All right, so the Facilities and Operations Committee, it's my first time too. Now I'm talking too loud, huh? So, actually, it was a great meeting. I have two great members with Director Constem and Director Brim Edwards, which is great for me on my first time. We discussed, we know the work plan for 2021, 2022. We got an update on our modernization project from the Office of School Modernization, and we got a report from the Bond Accountability Committee. And our next meeting is on the 27th of October. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Our final committee, as far as I know, and I hope, is the Policy Committee. Director Brim Edwards.
Thanks. So maybe just a preview, we've got a meeting tomorrow from 4:00 to 6:00 here at Lema Conference Room, and we're going to crank through a number of policies. So we have, we're going to get an update on the Student Conduct and Discipline Policy, which has been in abance for quite a while, and it is the subject of discussions with PAT, so we're just going to get a staff update on that. And then we're going to review draft policy language for the liability of employees of the district. This is a holdover from last year's Policy Committee. Hope to move on that tomorrow. We also discovered that actually we needed to revise our, let us call our policy on policies, and put the policy language actually in the policy, so we'll have a draft of that tomorrow. Hope to move that out of the committee. And then also, we're going to get a head start on the resolution we're about ready to consider that mentions a vacation policy. So we currently have several different policies related to vacation, and they don't reflect current practice, so we're going to consider a vacation policy. And then we have another six, five or six policies that we're going to be proposing for rescission. Again, cleaning things up in our policy, virtual policy manual. And another thing, and this is something that I'd be interested, not just in the Policy Committee members, but also, we're going to have a discussion about who else should get our draft policy changes. So currently, it has a pretty limited distribution, so if you don't go to the committee meeting, or you don't happen to watch the meeting, or you don't just go looking to the website about what's under consideration, so if people have suggestions on who else we should distribute our policies to, we'll be having a discussion about that. And that's it. But we welcome anybody's, other board members' participation if they want to come to the meeting tomorrow.
That's great. Thank you for that. I really like that you suggested a list, a distribution list, so to do kind of a push notification to those who, I'm not sure how many people actually watch our meetings.
Everyone does.
They're very popular. I'm just, I'm suggesting, or thanking you for thinking to do push notifications to people who might not just love turning on YouTube and watching our meetings, our policy meetings, although they're great. We're going to move now to, for resolution to suspend 5.60.10, I'm sorry, .010P Administrative Employees Terms of Employment. Vice Chair Scott, would you like to introduce this next item?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Thanks, Chair DePass. So I will try and be quick, see if we can buy back a little bit of time in today's agenda. So just for background, this particular policy, 5.60.010P Administrative Employees Terms of Employment, this was first adopted by the district in 1971. It was amended in 1976, '77, '79, '95, and finally, in 2005, most recently. There are a number of provisions in the policy, but we're only going to focus on a couple. One of the things that became clear very recently is that this policy has not been consistently applied over the years. And we know, at least for the last five years and potentially longer, there are some provisions that have not been consistently applied. But when it was sort of brought forward, then the decision, you know, by the board in the district really needs to be, are we going to start applying this policy, or does it require some changes? There are two provisions in the policy that, again, have not been applied consistently, and at least that I find a little bit problematic. One of those has to do with the hiring or promotion of employees into administrative positions. This particular language actually requires the board to approve all promotions or hirings of employees into administrative positions, so these are like principal positions. So again, it's not clear, I'm sure the board may have done this at one point, it's been a long time, and I think there's a real question whether the board should be involved at all at hiring at that level. Another provision in this policy requires the board to approve employment contracts that the district enters into. And again, that is not something that had been applied, although when the policy was sort of, I don't, you know, discovered, we have approved two contracts recently that have come before the board. So really, the reason why we're bringing this resolution forward tonight is because, you know, once we started going through this, there's really two options for the district and the board. One is to start applying this consistently, right? To sort of say, okay, the policy's on the books, and let's go ahead and every, you know, every principal position in the district, he's going to come before the board, and we can weigh in on it, every contract is going to come before the board. Or I think the second option here is for the board to temporarily suspend the policy and refer it back to the Policy Committee to hopefully take some quick action and come back to us with a policy that is more consistent with practice, but also, I mean, more consistent really with best practices around these types of decisions. That was my preferred option, and I talked to Chair DePass about it, and she also supported that path forward. So that's why what you have before you is a resolution that temporarily suspends this particular, actually, and temporarily suspends the two provisions I mentioned. So again, the hiring of administrative positions and the approval of contracts, and then asks the Policy Committee to come back to the board by January 1st of 2022 with a recommended amended policy that sort of appropriately reflects the board's role in establishing personnel policies and the superintendent's authority to actually make hiring decisions. So that's what the resolution before you does. I want to go ahead and flag, if you're okay, Director Brim Edwards. Director Brim Edwards had some suggested amendments to the resolution that is in your board books right now, and I'll go ahead and pass these out. Do you want me to walk through these, or do you want to?
Yeah, I mean, there, we could, hopefully, we'll bring them forward jointly. It's essentially just taking, my question, when I looked at the amendment or the resolution was, just to really be specific about what it was that we were suspending. So primarily, what you'll see in the yellow language is just the specification of the portion of the, and the sections of the policy that are being suspended until January 1. And so I view it as a technical amendment, just clarifying the intention.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. I view it as a friendly technical amendment, if you can have both of those things combined, that just provides more clarity. Provides a little bit more clarity about the very specific provisions that we are suspending.
So I have a quick question. So given that this is an interim measure, does that mean that you believe that there are things in this policy that are worth keeping? Are there aspects of this policy that are worth keeping?
Yeah, there's a lot in this policy, and, I mean, if you sort of just, and it's a little bit of a, what's the right word? Yeah, I was thinking, but that wasn't the right word. That smells nice, right? It's, there's a lot right in here.
Those things at the end of the Christmas tree?
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, like around, it includes things around like moving expenses and pers pickup and benefits, and so there is a lot there, and I think the Policy Committee is going to take a comprehensive view of it. I will just tell you personally, I think, you know, my view is that the board's role, that the appropriate role for a board is to say to the superintendent, here is a, here is a sort of outline of a contract, and that you, within that outline, you are free to negotiate, right, with new hires, and the superintendent should have those hiring decisions. So maybe there's, you know, pay issues or vacation accrual, that types of thing within that box. Anything outside of that box, we might ask the superintendent to say, hey, if you have to want a contract that's outside of that, you got to come back to the board. That's my, you know, experience in other governments and sort of my experience of best practice. I'll defer to the Policy Committee to do some of that research in terms of what best practice is around that, but I think that sort of reflects, he is our employee, and then everyone else works for him, and I think as a result of that, I think it's important the superintendent be able to decide who, in fact, it is that is working, you know, in the district for him. It is our job to sort of set those parameters. There are other things in here that may, that actually will stay in effect, because this is only temporarily suspending these two provisions, but I think we'll come forward with a comprehensive review from the Policy Committee.
And I heard January 1st, and so I'm not going to be here on January 1st, that's New Year's Day. But if it's the first week of January, I would be happy to show up for that.
I think it's by or before, so hopefully maybe the last meeting in December.
With the user caveats, if my, if the committee members um get to work.
And already full agenda in that committee.
That's noted, noted.
So with, maybe with that, I'll just-
I wouldn't even go say anything without talking about me in the middle of the meeting.
So maybe with that, I'll just sort of see if there are questions about this resolution.
So do we, should we get it on the table first?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Would you like a motion to put it on the table?
Yes, I'd like a motion. Do we have a motion?
I'll, I'll move the um amended version. Is that been posted, Ms. Ledge?
Well, can't we just make them, we can make a mo- we can make amendments from the dais, so I think-
We, we can. We should just also get it posted.
We should just get it posted, but-
I, I was gonna say, it's easier to introduce the amended version and then post it. So, so I'll second that.
Um, and in the meantime, we'll get it posted, posted up. Um, just so that people have the benefit of seeing specifically what we're voting on.
Okay, so we have um, uh, we have a, a motion and a second. Do we have any board discussion?
Uh, yes. I have um a couple of questions. Um, and also just a, a little bit of context also, because, okay, believe it or not, I was at the board meeting when it got adopted.
And you still have the materials.
And I still have it. And I could find it without really looking that hard. Um, so I was on the board in 2005 uh when the policy was adopted, and we did use the earlier policy um as a base. And um as context, it was offered because um it had been a fairly tumultuous time of the district with lots of turnover, and there were some sort of unprecedented um benefits and buyout packages that had been offered to senior employees by previous superintendents and boards. And really, the fo- the primary focus um of the policy had been to be transparent with the benefits that were offered to senior um executives district. Um, both to allow for providing a competitive um pay package, pay and benefit package to attract and retain uh senior executives, and also to produce, or to provide our fiduciary um duties to the taxpayers and the community. So it was really to have transparency um within the benefits of, because there hadn't been. Um, in addition, the policy also prohibited long contract buyouts. And uh, for those people who were around in the early 2000s, there were several of them. There were multi-year uh contract buyouts that really cost the district a lot in credibility. Um, and following the PPS policy being um passed, the state followed PPS's lead and adopted legislation that also limited those contract buyouts. Um, and um, I think it's um a good idea to review the policy. Um, and I'm looking forward to um Superintendent Guerrero and the staff's engagement in that conversation. Um, I know, based on conversations I've had with Director um Scott, that um, the, the question of the authority to hire and who makes the decision, I think we're in agreement, and um I'm looking forward to ways in which the policy can reflect, can reflect that, because I think we're in agreement that the superintendent's um hires um the executive team and cascading down, the principals um and teachers, and that um the board essentially has uh two people that it hires, the superintendent and then the independent, the senior independent auditor. Um, so I'm looking forward to how we can have our, our committee reflect that, and the same time, or the policy reflect that, but at the same time, um, not but, but and, at the same time, um, create that um, that framework that also um provides some guidelines on what can be offered. And so, you know, I'm looking forward to the, to the discussion, and um welcome um again, staff's um perspective um engagement in that process.
Are there any other, is there any further comment? And if, if there is, it's, I'm hoping it'll be very brief, because we're, we're behind. We're, we're behind the clock.
So I, I have a comment. Um, so I'm just trying to understand, this is a po- a procedure type of uh question. So from my understanding that we have committee that deal with this, I'm just curious why this didn't get to the committee first before we brought it here? It seemed like that's what the Policy Committee is for. So I'm just, I'm just curious on what the policy is for dealing with things like this? Because it seemed like this could have been dealt with at the Policy Committee, not taking our time here at the board meeting.
Yeah, so I, I guess what I would say, because it's an existing policy that's in place, um, that the district really should be following it. And so um, we could have referred it to the Policy Committee and kept it in place. Um, and, and that, I mean, I wanna be clear, that is an option right now um for the board. Um, but I think it's bad practice, which is why I think we should temporarily suspend it. But the board is the only one who can temporarily suspend the policy. The Policy Committee can only um recommend revisions and amendments to the board.
You're saying you think it's bad practice because we are not following it?
Oh, I, I think it would be bad practice if we were following it. So we haven't been following it, but now we've sort of started following it, and I, 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 yeah, I think it's problematic.
But just, just to be clear, if we have policies, we should, the, the policies, I mean, they're the roadmap for the district. Um, but actually, this is a, like a separate conver- maybe a separate discussion about how things get brought in on the committee, committee agenda. Um, it was on the Policy Committee's agenda already to, or work plan to um work on it. So um, it, it would have came there anyway, but I think having clarity on how things reach-
Yeah, the flow of work. I, I agree with that. Um, I, I hope that um our newest board members understand that we, um, every, every Wednesday following this meeting, we have an agenda-setting meeting, and that's, that is for all of us here to contribute uh to that if you have an item that you would like to be considered. Roseanne graciously sends out a, a reminder, like clockwork. And so those meetings are 11:30 the Wednesday following these board meetings, and those would be the time. It doesn't mean if you have a um great idea, it would be on the next agenda. It would mean it would be considered at that, at that agenda-setting meeting.
So I think, Gary, my understanding of, of answering your question is that if we, we have to do this at the board meeting to suspend the policy, because the only people who can suspend the policy is the full board, so the Policy Committee can't suspend it. So while it's in place on the books, we technically have to follow it. But what we're saying is, there are parts of this policy that A, we haven't been following, and B, don't make any sense to follow, given our current culture, and also take up a lot of our time and the staff's time. So we're suspending it here at this, the, the vote is to, the question on the table is to suspend it here tonight so that, that we don't have to do all this extra busy work while the Policy Committee does their work to modify it.
Okay, so just, just so I'm clear, so it's a policy that we're currently not following. And since we're not doing that, we, instead of us figuring out why we're not following the policies that are set, we just suspend the policy? Is that like a practice? I'm just curious, I'm asking.
Not at all. I mean, I, I think, so, so I mean, I'll just, I'll speak more broadly um to government. Governments that have existed for a long time adopt a lot of policies. Um, ideally, every one of those policies is followed to a T. Um, but I will also tell you, I've never worked for a government, whether it's the federal government, state, local, regional, that gets it right every time. Um, I think as part of our normal process, we should be going through, and we are, right? And that's actually something that Director Brim Edwards is, is, is doing this year, is sort of going through to say, hey, are there any old policies here that are outdated? Or we sort of moved away from? And, and at that point, the, the right thing to do, you, you either come back into compliance with it, or you rescind it or suspend it. And I think that's where, I mean, this, this, this became, we, the, the, the district became aware of that we were not following this a few months ago. Um, and so, you know, it, it was really at that point, and, and that's why we're here today, this board can either say, actually, I like this policy, and every board meeting, we're gonna have uh principals, uh, resolution approving all the principals and any contracts that come forward. That is absolutely an option for this board, um, in which case it'll stay in place until the Policy Committee comes back, or we can suspend it. What I don't think we should do is just continue to ignore provisions of it while we apply other provisions of it. And that's what I'm trying to avoid with this temporary suspension.
So I, I do have a, a question. Um, because actually, in 2019, in response to the Secretary of State's audit, um, they had questions about the overs- oversight of executive administration, and the district responded with a narrative about the oversight, which included a statement. In 2005, the board approved a policy limiting excessive employee benefits for central office administrators, which the superintendent and the chief of human resources will continue to follow. So we cited that in our audit response. Um, it's a different issue than you're raising, but it's the issue of excessive benefits. So I, I guess I just wanna make clear that in the, in the 90 days in which we're reviewing the policy that um the intention, since this is more about the who, who has the authority to um select individuals versus um letting, uh loosening, uh, or, or getting rid of any uh limits on benefits, that, um, so my, my question is, in the sort of, the time in which it's suspended, I'm assuming the staff is going to continue to use the posted salary schedule, the benefits that are listed, and stay within the limits, the, the benefit limits that are currently within the policy? This is a question for staff. I mean, just, I, I just wanna make sure, because we're not suspending that, and so I wanna make-
And I'm curious if it even, I mean, if we don't have anybody in the pipeline that this would apply to between now and January 1st?
But we have 96-
I'm just wanting to make sure that um we're gonna, we're gonna continue to follow.
You turn your mic, your mic off.
I just want, sorry. It's not so much that we would vote on the contract, it's that the parameters of the benefits are gonna stay the same. And the salary schedule, which has already been outlined.
We're following the posted salary schedule.
Yes, so this is a question for staff, which I think the superintendent was gonna answer.
Administration will continue to follow the parameters under which we've been working for non-represented staff. That includes uh parameters that are already outlined in our Employee Benefits Summary Handbook. Uh, we've been pretty boilerplate, uh, and there will be hiring between now and by the time uh the, the, the board considers, you know, the direction that it wants to go with this. Uh, we have a dozen interim school administrators, for example, uh, that we need to find permanent leaders for.
Yeah, just to be clear, in the 90 days, those aren't gonna come to the board. Um, is, uh, under this policy, which is what we're voting for. I'm in agreement. I'm just, I'm just saying, so like, we wouldn't, those wouldn't come to us.
They have not been coming to the board, and they will continue not to come to the board.
Right. And the, but we'd stay within the benefit box that we've got, e- even though we're, they're not gonna come to the board.
Correct. Director Lowry, and, and then Student Representative Weinberg?
No, I was just gonna say, it feels like this could be handled outside of the meeting, maybe, and this is kind of getting in the weeds of some things.
Um, yes, I am also trying to move us ahead and not doing a great job of it. But I meant it when I said it last time, that I do wanna stay on time, and we're um about 40 minutes late, so, or half an hour. Um, is there any board discussion? We've already done that. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any public comment?
No.
So the vote, the, the board will now vote on the amended Resolution 6374, um, resolution to suspend parts, uh, portions of 5.60.010 dash P Administrative Employees Terms of Employment. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes? All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution, amended Resolution 6374 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with Student Representative Weinberg unofficially voting.
Yes.
Thank you. We are now going to get a budget process overview and the 2021, 2022 budget calendar. Superintendent Guerrero, would you please introduce these next items?
Well, I'll be happy to introduce our deputy superintendent or our CFO. Where are you guys, Rochambeau?
Aren't you glad you're on West Coast time tonight?
Yes.
CFO, Alberto Delgado. That's Delgado.
Delgario.
Delgadio.
By the time you're done with this, you'll have a perfect accent.
I will share that um you'll probably be disappointed. Um, my shoes are pretty basic today. I was afraid of the rain and just wanted to not take that chance.
You, you should see Hermans, they're pretty fierce.
I saw them.
It's okay to get behind schedule for shoe talk.
Yes, we're running behind and um-
Yep, it's a double standard.
So, good evening. I'm here to share, um, for discussion. I just wanted to like reiterate for discussion, we're not voting on the calendar today. Uh, and, and really to bring forth uh the budget calendar for uh discussion and to share how, how we're gonna go about preparing the budget, and in addition, the subsequent approval process. I don't have a presentation for today, darn it. Uh, but um, you know, as, as we think about the budget process, uh, there's just some key things, themes and, and mindsets that I, I like to keep uh in mind as, as we look forward to building and sustaining a multi-year plan. We reach outward to engage key stakeholders and, and focus on how well we're doing the work, particularly as we consider the recent approval of our strategic plan and, and the, the long, the work that's, that's ahead of us. So with the budget calendar in mind, uh, there's a few dates I like to highlight. Um, and, and subsequently, we'll turn it over to the board for questions and additional conversation. Um, and, and really, in about a month's time, on October 26th, the board uh will, uh, will be proposing to the board to appoint the new Community Budget Review Committee members, so CBRC. They're a critical component to the process, and every year, the board appoints CBRC members to work through the budget process, whether it's um just providing feedback of their specific mandates or com- or, or initiatives that the board wants CBRC to be mindful of. It's that opportunity. So in about a month's time, the board will be uh appointing members. And then during the month of November, we plan a whole community engagement events that will focus on topics such as school finance 101, and also socializing the strategic plan. I think it's an opportunity to start having some conversations around not just finance 101, but how does it fall into play with the strategic plan? Um, it's always um interesting to have conversations with folks, and then, you know, it, it, there's conversation, wow, there's a $2 billion budget. And I'm like, well, let's, let's carve out all the core functioning uh initiatives, classroom, keeping schools open, keep the lights on, that is part of the budget. And then, right then, there's other component around strategic planning and initiatives we focus on. So it's, it's essentially engaging in those type of conversations. And we'll be working with our community engagement team, uh, Shanice Clark and, and the team, to help put those plans together. Um, and then fast forward to March 15th, where we propose to have a work joint, a, a joint work session with CBRC and, and the board to review the strategic plan and the multi-year, uh, the, the strategic plan, or I keep saying plan, but the strategic and multi-year plan, um, and, and have a conversation to engage on where we are and, and how are we then getting ready to catapult into full-blown budget planning? Um, then on April 26th is a date that we're proposing for the superintendent's uh proposed budget. I will note that on the 26th, it's a non-routine board meeting. So um, taking some feedback from the previous year, we really wanna carve out some time to focus on the budget. So that would be proposing that on Tuesday, the 26th, ideally, there would be, the only item on the agenda would be the budget. Um, and then on May 4th, which would also be a non-routine uh board meeting day, would be slated for public comment, but then also for, uh, subsequently for board discussion on, on the budget. And ultimately culminating on June 14th would be the adoption of the budget. Um, and I believe you all have the full calendar, just kind of highlighted some of the key dates there. But really, those are my remarks. We're gonna turn it over to, to you and, and see uh feedback, questions, and other considerations.
Sure, I appreciate your um adapting uh this, this, these times. I know you were very new last year, but to allow for a little bit more um comment and feedback. And my only question was, um, and I don't know this, how are CBRC members chosen or recruited, or?
There, there is an application process. So there is an application process. As a matter of fact, applications are, oh, it's open right now, so uh, community members are interested. That is, uh, I'm putting that plug in, they can apply, and we have our team that's been out uh advertising and, and promoting it. And so once the applications come in, there is a committee that um reviews the applications and then comes forth with recommendations for, for the board. Um, and I believe we- And I believe we have four openings, and I think there are two applications only. So we definitely want community to step up.
Yeah. Are there any requirements, or are there multiple pathways to get, you know, some committees require, you know, like a degree in finance, but other committees are like, are you curious about the Audit Committee? You know? So are there any special qualifications you're looking for in volunteers?
Just a commitment and passion to the work. So we do go into the evenings. There's conversations around what the budget is. So my experience, which was really just this past year, but having conversations with other team members, we have all walks of life that come in with all different sorts of experience with finance, but really, it's like helping to bring in that perspective and willingness to engage in conversations around how we're pushing forward the budget.
Chief Delgado, I know that when, my first year on the board, I was the board member on CBRC, and we worked very closely with Shanice Clark to develop a very thoughtful sort of evaluation of applicants, and then I was part of the interview process last year for the cohort that was on the board last year. Really, Michelle being intentional about what voices are we not hearing from on CBRC? And I know Shanice did a ton of work, and some other folks did actively recruiting. So we have, is it Renee Anderson that joined last year, and some other folks, to really make sure that that committee is really representing, you know, the community in lots of different ways. And so I hope we're able to continue that pattern. I know Shanice has changed jobs and is a little busier, no, a little busier these days.
She might have changed jobs, but I'm like...
She's just, she's a little busier these days, but I know that that was really valuable for the incredible makeup of the committee, and especially the great recommendations they gave us last year.
And we have support from Maria Hernandez on Shanice's team that's helping to promote and get out into the community. So, but obviously, we only have two applications in, so...
I'm sorry, I thought Jonathan, when Jonathan went to choose of staff, didn't Shanice go to where Jonathan was, or am I totally making stuff up?
I don't know.
I'm making stuff up. Okay, good. I just, I gave Shanice a promotion. So, with, great, just in my mind.
So that's also...
We actually just rescinded that policy.
So for board members, especially Directors Green and Hollins, if you know somebody that you think might be interested, it would be a great time, you know, it's a great way to enter into the organization as an outsider and kind of learn the inner workings.
You can send them my way, and we can get them going on the application process and all that good stuff.
Sure to pass.
So they would just need to email you?
They certainly can, and I can then point them to our website.
I'm just looking to figure out what's the best way to get them, because like tomorrow, I'm actually going to start reaching out to some of the people that I know, saying that, let's stop talking about we want to be apart, and actually do something to be apart.
The formal process, they can visit our website.
Okay.
They can type in, search CBRC, and they'll take them to the website, where they can download the application, and then there's instructions there on how to submit.
And while we're on this, while we're on this topic, we also have two openings for our external committee members on the Audit Committee. But anybody's interested in that. You can send...
I know we have a community member that has expressed interest, so, but we would like to have a few more to choose from. Director Scott, did you have a question?
Thank you. I mean, Audit Committee, that's one of the best tickets in town. Yeah, you should definitely go on that.
It's unfair with CBRC.
Almost. CFO Delgado, thank you. It's a good budget calendar. I really appreciate the separate meetings for council and for our new board members or those who are not quite as immersed in Oregon budget law. Just to reiterate, I mean, the April 26th special meeting is when the proposed budget comes out, and then the May 24th special meeting is when the board will approve the budget, and then June 14th is when we'll adopt the budget. And again, for those new to budget processes, that's Oregon law, that there's those three stages. So the superintendent will propose, we will then approve, and then we will also adopt. We take two different actions as a board to get to that final. And what I appreciate is that you've got a really good amount of time between the proposed and approved, about a month in there, and then about three weeks between that and adopted. I also am a big fan that the best proposed budget is one that doesn't get amended. And so I guess I would want to sort of ask you or the superintendent, what is the best way for board members, and not only the best way, but the best timing for board members to be bringing forward priorities, things we want to be seeing in the budget, you know, changes or, you know, so for instance, one of the issues last year that I was really interested in was hiring more, you know, janitors, right, in our buildings, which the superintendent already was planning to do. So it was, you know, I was able to sort of say, hey, I really want to see this.
That was an easy one.
Yeah. And then, you know, sure enough, it showed up in the proposed budget. What's the best way for board members to communicate this?
I would say as soon as possible now. I think there, it's, part of the work, as we start thinking about, like, looking forward and reaching outward, is really like, there's this continuous cycle of budget, like planning, right? Budgeting sounds very technical, but like, just like, how are we thinking about the work we're doing every day on a continuous process versus this one moment in time? Technically, there is this one moment in time, to your point, Director Scott, we have the far Oregon law, there's very specific things, but I'd say, you know, we can have, start having these discussions now, and it gives us time to think about our overall strategic plan and alignment to those resources. And as we come to a March 15th multi-year strategic, both multi-year and strategic plan conversations, it's a lot of conversations that we've been talking throughout the year that we then can have a more robust conversation as well.
Yeah. And we didn't even rehearse this, but that's exactly what the answer I was hoping you'd give, because honestly, it is so much easier for these things to come up during the year and then build them in, rather than at the end, when we start trying to do amendments, it's a trade-off at that point. At that point, it's a, you know, to move money here, you're taking it from here. And so, so, yeah, yeah.
I appreciate you saying that, Director Scott, because we don't want an open brainstorm at the 11th hour, you know, we, this isn't constructed in a vacuum. We have very clear reference points here. We have a two-volume budget book that you can refer to, and the question we all should be asking ourselves is, the investments we made in all the different areas, did they provide the service delivery, the service delivery that we need to operate our core functions, but are they resourcing the priority areas? And we have a strategic plan, and we have a little work to do about how we sequence all that work over the next few years. We're a little, we're a little captivated right now with COVID response, but our resources should match our priority areas. And so, and as we learn how our students are doing, where the unfinished areas for learning and growth and support are, we're going to want to invest in areas that are going to support our students directly there, too. So I am open to hearing your feedback. You all have regular one-on-ones with your superintendent. That would be a perfect opportunity to discuss any of those areas you'd like to learn more about or are interested in.
So I did, just a question. So last year, God, so long, I think it was last year. We actually, we ended up, we were going to have a one-meeting discussion about setting the reserves, and it actually became a bigger issue, and it was two meetings, because we were being asked to set the amount of reserves before we even talked about what we were going to pay for. Are we doing that process again this year? Or will, because in previous years, it had been, that had just been part of the budget that gets, you know, proposed, that there's a certain amount for reserves, and, but this was a, hey, in advance, we want the board to commit to X amount of reserves. So I'm curious, I don't see that here, but I just want to make sure that it's now back in the rest of the budget process.
It is, and thank you for bringing that up. Deputy Superintendent Claire Hertz reminded, like, brought that to my attention as well as going through this full cycle, and it makes perfect sense. So for, to put it in context, there's a fund balance, and so as we think about what budgeting looks like as part of our long-term sustainability and as part of our ongoing investments, do we need to, and if we do, how do we consider the fund balance usage as part of that planning process? And so the earlier we have that conversation, the better we can then be positioned to help align our investments over the course of the next few months. So the answer is yes, we would be coming back in October to do that, and at least that would be the proposal, and I can't, I don't know where Roseanne is, so I probably will follow up in having that conversation. But the goal would be to then bring information forward and start, like, getting a better sense, as we just closed the year, we're getting a better sense of what our fiscal fund balance, or what our fund balance looks like based on the close of our fiscal year. We can then bring that information forward.
Only speaking from my own perspective, I hope it's more of a discussion versus we're asking you to vote on a specific number. I found it really difficult to be picking a specific number when we had no idea what the trade-offs were. And, I mean, maybe we'll know what the trade-offs are there, but it seems like in October, we might not. So I'll just say, just, I found that really challenging last year, to commit to put money X amount aside, but that might mean, you know, students not going to get something, and not knowing that. So that's one thing, I guess, I would like to see on the budget, even if it's not the formal budget calendar. The other issue, just generally, I really appreciate that there's more time here, and I hope that when we get into actually scheduling our meetings, we don't schedule other things. So like, last year, we had something like at 10 o'clock at night for 20 minutes, and so what looked to be a generous amount of time then got totally shrunk down. And I know I didn't do what the, sort of, what I felt I should have done for a billion-dollar budget, so I hope that we sort of really keep those time periods. And then the last piece, and maybe this is informal calendar, but in February, a lot of the staffing goes out, which is actually the majority of the budget, of just seeing, like, how it's aligned with the strategic plan. So again, that's when the majority of the budget actually heads out the door, even before we get into our formal process. So just having visibility into how that aligns with either the board goals or the strategic plan, just to be able to see it when it's happening, not from us hearing from school, from individual, you know, people at schools, like, hey, we got our staffing, and, you know, what's going on with it. It just makes us be better advocates for the alignment that happens.
And I want to be really clear about that, the thing you raised about the meeting that was late at night, and there was only 20 minutes, that that was because we, as a board, did what we did tonight, which is we've gone over our time limit, and then we did schedule another meeting to give us more time on the budget. But I think, I want to be really clear that that wasn't a staff issue, that was us as a board, we always talk about, I mean, I think, looking at tonight, and if we talked about it at our retreat, how do we regularly evaluate our meetings? Like, what tonight took more time? Was it student-centered? Was it work we could have done outside of the meetings? How are we showing up and using our time? And what is the consequence of that, right? Like, I think you talked about the cost-benefit of, like, if we set a certain amount of reserves, if we spend our time on certain issues, what else then are we, what else, where do we end up, like, caught? And I think that was a perfect example of a night where we spent a lot of time on other stuff, didn't get to the heart of it, and then ended up having to schedule another meeting. So I think it's something...
I don't think I said it was staff's fault.
I just want to be really clear. I don't think you did, but I just want to say that publicly, it wasn't staff's fault, that was on us as a board, and I want us to just be conscious about the impacts of that, and I know it's something we're all wanting to work on of how we use our time wisely.
We, I think that's great. We just, we do want to be intentional and mindful of how much time we're taking talking, and, and we can, and yes, exactly, we're a little bit over time, and we have another meeting, so...
I have a quick question, Chief Delgado. So, so I really do appreciate that these are discreet meetings and not embedded within our regular board meetings. I think that's really important. But am I reading this correctly, that we'll just have two opportunities for board discussion before we're asked to approve the budget? So there's the presentation of the superintendent's budget, which of course, we will have had to review before, but we won't have, you know, the additional narrative, whatever. So we have that on the 26th, and then we have a full board engagement session on the 4th. And then that's, looks to me like that's it, because the presentation from the CBRC doesn't look like it's within a board meeting, and it doesn't look like it's an opportunity. So my question is just, well in advance, do we think that's sufficient to, you know, the evening of the presentation of the proposed budget and then one other session? You know, I, to my mind, I think it might, could be helpful to have another, but I don't know where people, how people feel.
A nice smile, because we had an earlier, like, exchange regarding it. And there is an opportunity to consider the week of May 16th as an additional exclusive board meeting for additional discussion. And as we were going through that, we're identifying dedicated times, on the 26th, some additional dedicated time on the 4th, and then, depending, most likely, there will be other agenda items on the 10th and the 24th. So between the 10th and the 24th is the week of the 16th. So if the board felt like, well, let's just put it on the calendar now, that's something, we're having the discussion, some additional consideration.
Personally, I think that would be wise. You can always take it off, but I think we might need it. But that's just me.
No concerns from my part. We certainly do that.
Do we have any other questions about the calendar that's proposed?
I had one quick question around the CBRC. Is the deadline still October 1st this Friday?
The deadline is October 1st. We have extended it once, and depending on volume, we could consider extending it again. I don't know where we are with applications today at the end of the day, but that line is this Friday.
If by the deadline, you don't have enough people?
I would just then bring it back for discussion with the team and figure out, like, to be totally transparent, I don't know the repercussions of postponing it again. We can certainly find out. I think it would merit to try to get more applications and more community involvement, so it may be worthwhile to consider postponing it.
In the past, when we haven't, we've added people in later on, if we needed to. But we do like to have people start from the beginning, because it is like a training process, and people learn together. So the sooner folks can start with the CBRC, the better, because of that sort of learning curve of the budget. But, you know, we want to make sure that there's access for folks.
Who is our board representative to the CBRC?
Both Gary and I are listed, so I'm not actually sure. I guess we both are.
I think you just were voluntold.
Well, that was what was on the spreadsheet you sent us, like, a month ago, that it was both Gary and I were listed.
Which reminds me, and this is a slightly off-topic, but if, we also would love to have a board representative on the Oregon School Boards Association. They're based in Salem, and just while I'm thinking about it, it's completely off-topic. Yeah, if you're not doing anything, that's a, that's a meeting, another meeting you can go to, but it's a great one to be involved in, because they stay on top of the legislature.
Can I ask a question about, I don't see on here, but maybe I'm reading it wrong. On this calendar, is there a date when we actually get the budget? The two-volume?
That would be the 26th.
The 26th, okay.
The proposed budget is...
April 26th?
Correct.
Proposed budget, yeah. I wrote down proposed budget, the 26th. Okay. I think it's time for us to conclude, unless anyone has any other comments. Thank you so much.
Appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Yeah. This is, this is great to have this in front of us and to be able to anticipate these discreet meetings. I think it's an improvement that I look forward to participating in. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Enjoy the evening.
Thank you. Okay. The next regular, is there any other business before we adjourn? And if not, we're adjourning our meeting now, the next regular meeting of the board will be held on September 28th. This meeting is adjourned. I'm sorry, that's October 13th. Thank you. Tired.